Good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:30 PM and I am calling to order this meeting of the Audit Committee for our quarterly meeting. Our first agenda item is the 2024-2025 Internal Audit Annual Report to the Board of Trustees. Over to you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Good evening. Board Audit Committee Chair, Dr. Lovridge, Board members, Ms. Aguirre. Thank you for being here on a late Friday evening. I appreciate your time. There are two items on the agenda today. The first one is on the Internal Audit Annual Report. That's looking back to last year. This presentation is really important, I think, as far as it relates to my accountability to the board, to let you know what we've been working on as internal audit in the last year and that we've met your expectations. The presentation is broken down into three main sections. One is confirmations and disclosures that are required by our Global Internal Audit Standards. I also provided acronyms here for the trustees, but I'll try to spell everything out. We're also going to be reviewing last year's audit plan, the 2024-2025 Audit Plan Completion, and then the final section is to cover the Fraud, Waste and Abuse Hotline Report Summary for last year. And we'll start with the confirmations and disclosures that are required by the Institute of Internal Auditors, Global Internal Audit Standards. This slide just summarizes the purpose and value of the Internal Audit Department. Our role is to support the board and district leadership by providing independent, risk-based assurance and insight that helps the district achieve its goals and to enhance their reputation and credibility with stakeholders. And internal audit is most effective when we operate independently, when we report directly to the board, and perform our work objectively and professionally in line with the standards from the Institute of Internal Auditor Centers. This slide, I include this slide just to reaffirm to the board that internal audit has organizational independence, thanks to our reporting relationship with the Board of Trustees. And I'm happy to report that internal audit did not have any impairments to independence during the 2425 fiscal year. Maintaining objectivity is critical to the credibility of internal audit. We do, we have established processes in place in internal audit that forbid internal auditors from conducting any audits of areas where they've previously worked over the last 12 months. We've also have annual conflict of interest disclosures where auditors disclose if they have any relationships with other individuals in the district that are at the administrator or higher level. And we use those to make engagement assignments, to make sure that we're not assigning people to areas where there's family members working there, and make sure that there's no bias and we eliminate any questionable, any questions related to our objectivity. We're also not allowed to accept anything of value, money, or gifts that could impair or even presume to impair our professional judgment. I'm also happy to report that during the 2425 fiscal year, there was no impairments to objectivity. And then I'm going to move on to the next section of the presentation, and that's to cover our audit plan. I wanted to include this slide just to provide some context for our new trustees and for the public, and remind you that internal audit's work is guided by our annual audit plan. Our audit plan is developed based on an annual risk assessment that we conduct. We also closely align our engagements to the district's priorities, in this case, the strategic blueprint. And we also build in contingency hours into our plan to make sure that it's flexible, so internal audit can be responsive to changes in the district's priorities, risks, or if we get requests from the superintendent or team, or even from the board itself. In developing the plan, we always obtain input from management leadership all the way to the superintendent and then individually with each trustee. Our audit plan does require board approval, and it comes to the board every year in April. I know that we recognize the board's commitment to transparency, and so for that reason, we are, we post our annual audit plans in the district's website under the Internal Audit Department's page. We have audit plans dating back to 2014, 15, when I took over the department. This ensures that, you know, we have a history of the audits that we've conducted throughout the years, but also even the most recent audit plan is posted there, because we really want to make sure that, from the public to management level, to all the way up to Ms. Aguirre's level, that everybody knows what projects we have planned for the year. And then we're going to focus most of the, the rest of the, the presentation on this year's audit plan. The audit plan was originally approved by the board in April 16th of 2024. I believe we had about 18 engagements at that point. In February 2025, the board approved adjustments that I recommended to the audit plan, which increased the number of projects to 23 engagements. Between February and June, we conducted three additional engagements. There were two audits and one cap. They were all focused on attendance. And we also removed three corrective action plans from our list of engagements. The reason we did that is because those three corrective action plans didn't have any activities that would do during that fiscal year. All those plans are really focused, the implementation dates are focused on the current fiscal year, so we've rolled them over and included them on this year's 2526 audit plan. So this slide provides just as an example of the engagement types that we conduct here in internal audit. Most of the work that we do really focuses on audits. Those engagements are risk-based. Internal audit determines objectives and scope for those engagements based on an engagement-level risk assessment. The types of audits that we conduct is we do financial, compliance, operational, as well as IT audits. We conducted 12 engagements, audit engagements last year, or were included in our audit plan. We also conduct advisory engagements. These, the intent of these is to provide objective advice and insight. This is a very, the, the purpose of these engagements advisory is to be very collaborative with district leadership and management. This is not based on a risk assessment, rather than we get feedback from leadership based on their needs, and we tailor objectives and scope based on those needs. We had two engagements under this category last year that were included in the plan. And then the final, final engagement type or major type that we conduct are those corrective action plan follow-up reviews. We refer to them as CAPs. And these are really more focused on accountability. It's an independent validation of the plans that management and leadership have put in place to address audit findings or risks that we've identified through our work. And we are doing that independent validation that they're implementing those, those corrective actions effectively and timely. And we had eight engagements in this category in last year's plan. Any questions? Great. So this slide provides the audit plan completion for last fiscal year 2425. We completed 20 of the 23 engagements that were in our audit plan. That's about 87%. The remaining three engagements were either in the planning, fieldwork, or reporting phase, and those have been rolled over to the current year's plan, so we will finish those. This slide provides an audit plan completion trend for the last six years, and it reflects that, you know, we've consistently been able to complete over 80% of our audit plan. If you look at the highest completion rate, 90%, that was in 2023, which is great. But if you look at the project count, you'll see that this year we completed just one more project than that year. We just also had more projects on our plan to begin with. This slide illustrates how the work of internal audit directly supports the district's strategic blueprint. Last year of the 20 engagements that we completed, 18 or 90% of those were aligned to one or more of the district's five, the district's five strategic levers. This connection is important because it shows that internal audit is intentionally selecting and executing projects that contribute to the district's long-term goals and priorities. And it's one of the ways that we ensure that internal audit adds value, not just by checking boxes, but rather by informing and supporting the success of EPISD's strategic direction. In this slide, it's just a quick overview of the typical phases of an internal audit engagement. This gives you a sense of how we approach each project from planning, fieldwork, and reporting. And even once we finalize a report, it doesn't mean that we're done with the work. As I've said before, we conduct corrective action plan follow-up reviews to ensure that whatever findings were identified, or whatever risks were identified, that they're properly being managed or addressed through a corrective action plan developed by management. And again, you know, I think as a district, we're committed to transparency. All final reports are posted on the district's website under the Internal Audit page, dating back to the 2014-2015 fiscal year. For presentation purposes, I like to divide the audit plan into two separate groups of engagements. The first one includes our audit advisory and review engagements. There was 15 of these last year. We completed 12 of those 15 engagements. The final three at the bottom were the ones that overall we didn't complete. Those are the three that ended in the reporting, fieldwork, and planning phase, and that were rolled over to the current fiscal year. The second group of projects is the corrective action plan reviews. I think I focus a lot on that. These, I just, as a reminder, these are plans that are developed by management and leadership. They develop the activities, they develop the timelines. Internal audit's responsibility comes on the implementation side, where we, again, conduct follow-up reviews to monitor and make sure that activities are effectively implemented. We provide quarterly reports on the status of these corrective action plans to the, to the Audit Committee. I also, I know previously with Messiah that I met with her regularly, and I'll continue to do that with Martha as well, just to provide a status of where we are with the implementation of corrective action plans. And we also, once we finalized a review, whether it's at the end of the fiscal year or because the corrective action plan is closed, we'll also issue formal internal audit reports of that review. So last year, we had a total of eight corrective action plans with 86 individual activities that we monitored and reviewed. At the end of our reviews, again, we issued those reports, and we were able to close all eight corrective action plans, which is great. That means that in that case, those were previously approved or previously developed with dates prior to this, to 2024, 25, or 2425, and we were able to close them and move forward with them. And I'm happy to report that 98% of the corrective action plan activities were implemented. This slide provides us an overview of the corrective action plans by project code, and it, it reflects, it shows you which, which corrective action plans, how many activities each had, and how many of those were closed. And then this, this slide illustrates, I wanted to provide to the board just an overall picture of the eight corrective action plans and the length of time that they were open, as well as the number of extensions that we received for those corrective action plans. And then I'm sure, as you know, it's, it's, timing implementation is very important because delays can extend exposure to risk, so we monitor these timelines very closely. And if you look at those first three engagements, they had no extensions, so they were able to close those between four, in between four to 10 months. Okay, any questions so far? Okay. So I'm, the next part of the presentation, what I wanted to show the board is just, is just to highlight some of the audits that we completed last fiscal year. And the slides that follow include objectives, scope, and the alignment to the strategic blueprint, as well as a brief summary of the results of the audits. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in those slides because I know all of you have received the reports. We, we issue those final reports and we copy you in on that distribution, and like I said, they're also posted online. So if anybody is watching this presentation and wants, is interested in reading these reports, they can go online and find them. Also, I want to confirm to the board that the, the engagements that we're highlighting today, it's three of them, plus every other engagement in our audit plan, all of those were conducted in conformance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. And I'm very proud of that statement. We've been audited before, had an external quality assessment, so I don't think a lot of internal audit departments, not just in El Paso, but the state of Texas, can really say that. So very proud of my team for that accomplishment. I get a little bragging moment. Okay, so the first engagement, you all know we've been really working, we were working on a lot of attendance and truancy audits throughout the last couple of years. So we conducted these audits for seven high schools last year. The audits fall into the category of compliance and operation, and performance audits. You are probably already familiar with the objectives and scope for these audits. I'll just, I just want to highlight that this audit supported the strategic blueprint lever for culture of accountability with a focus on the key target to increase student attendance from 89 to 94%. And then I've listed the campuses that we, that we visited as part of our audit. The first, the first slide provides the, just the summary of the results related to attendance and truancy. At the end of the fiscal year for the seven campuses that we tested, they had a combined number of unexcused absences, just a little over 161,000, which translates into approximately 9.8 million in state funding. This represents the total funds the district would not receive due to unexcused absences. So it's important to understand that. The unexcused absences are those where the student is either truant, or the school may not know where they are, so they didn't give them an attendance reason code. Also, this data is for the reporting period, meaning the data that we report to the state for funding purposes. You'll see that for the seven campuses that we visited. The, the percent in attendance for those campuses varies from 90.4 for Coronado, and then all the way down to 83.5 for Jefferson High School. And then I also wanted to get just the total number of unexcused absences for all campuses for the district, and we're at approximately 426,000 is where we ended the year, per PMS data. Any questions? Okay. As far as the rest of the objective, the, the results related to attendance and average daily attendance coding, we've identified issues with attendance coding, documentation, campus-level monitoring of attendance, which, as you know, all could contribute to funding inaccuracies and missed opportunities for student interventions. I wanted, yes.
One question from the trustee.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually have a few questions, but I'll just ask this one because I found that when I ask you questions, you're like, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
But this, okay, so this example, yeah. Whenever you do an audit like this, or this audit. So you, you have data, right?
Yes.
And then you have your correction, your corrective action plan. Are you finding that that is making things go in the positive direction to where we're not getting as many absences or unexcused absences? Is it basically fixing part of the problem? Or are we not there yet?
I think we've made some strides. I don't think we're where we want to be. Obviously, I think we want to be at 94%. We wanted to be at 94% by 2025. We're not there yet. But I can tell you, based on the audits that we've conducted on attendance and truancy, I think attendance coding has improved. We're finding less issues, we're finding supporting documentation. What's, what's missing there is those unexcused absences. We're not finding all those kids and finding out why they're unexcused. Also, when it comes to average daily attendance coding, that was something that was new, but as we went from one campus to another, we did see some improvement. And I also want to talk about the next piece, which is focused on here.
So I guess, follow-up. I guess my question is, when there's a corrective action plan, and you all give, I don't know what the word is, suggestions or?
Recommendations.
This is recommendations on, okay, are you finding that the recommendations are helpful?
In some cases.
Okay.
So, and what, what happens, and one example is, for example, with, we did an, well, when we've done audits, and then we go back, we make recommendations, they develop corrective action plans, and we'll go back and we'll test. So if we see that we're still a pretty high error rate, if there's issues, then we'll be like, okay, this isn't working. Let's figure out a different strategy. And I do think that with the attendance coding, it's gotten better, even when you look at the findings related to the truancy 45-day attendance improvement plan. You know, in the prior years, campuses were not developing those. We see that they are now, but there's still something missing. Because as you'll see in one of the slides, we still have over 80% of kids still incurring truant, they still have truancy. So I think that there's been some work done here. This chart, you can see just the attendance, percent in attendance over the last few years. Prior to the pandemic, we were at 94.3%. Right after that, we dropped all the way to 89.3%. And then we kind of had a couple of years, we went up, but then we were stagnant, and then this last year, we went back up 1%. So we are making efforts and stride, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in the areas of attendance. And I think this is where, to me, the truancy findings were where we had the most concerns.
If I may add, so we are working through an attendance campaign that we will be presenting to the board. It's, it's identifying, not only ensuring the awareness and the, the reporting, but also what are we doing to ensure our students are coming to school? And so creating positive environments, ensuring that the supports are available so that they can have less obstacles in, in coming to school. So we're, we're working through that as we navigate the first couple of days of school.
And just to add to that, I think as we visit different campuses, what we're finding is that the cause for the high number of, of unexcuse, or the high number of truancy, it varies by campus. I, I think we've seen that, that these I, I, I think we've seen that, that these campuses have been just giving us a different perspective because we do see that the cause varies from campus to campus. So I think even the approach that principals take is going to have to be different from one campus to another. This area, but this area, just the overall data, this is a dashboard from one of the district's internal dashboards, and it just goes to show that we had over twenty-five percent of kids last year had ten or more absences. So we do have, and it's unexcused absences. So we do have an issue with kids just not coming to school.
Myra, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Can you go back to the slide where it had the campuses and then, right there?
Yes.
So at the bottom, where it says the twenty-five point nine million, right, that we missed out on, would that be if the district were at the ninety-four percent? Or that has nothing to do with the ninety-four percent, that's just based on the four hundred and twenty-six thousand unexcused absences?
What I, what I wanted to present was the value of unexcused absences. I think it's unrealistic for us to ever make up those twenty-five million dollars. But I did want to point out that unexcused absences have a very high value. Like, I pulled the data for all absences for the district, and sixty-two percent of our absences were unexcused. I think that's an opportunity missed, where maybe we could possibly either, like Martha said, a campaign on attendance to get kids to come to school, but also to get parents to provide notes to, so we know that they're not really truant. Because right now, I think if we think all these kids are truant, but they're really not, then we're spending a lot of effort on kids that may not need that intervention. So we really need to streamline our processes, so we focus on those kids that really need the help and, and, and because they might be at risk of dropping out of school or they're truly truant, they need a different type of support.
Is, is there something that kind of, just to kind of make the, like, I think that hits home, right, for anybody in the sense of saying like, this is all money that the district is losing out on, right?
Right.
Is, is there something like in terms of, like, for every percentage point?
Martha, I think, has that information. Our wonderful interim superintendent has that data.
So what we've presented, and as I meet with budget review committees, teacher advisory councils, every percentage is approximately three million dollars in revenue. And so that, when we share with our, our teachers, you know, as we're presenting the welcome of the school year, I, I shared we're leaving opportunities of resources on the table when we don't encourage the attendance of our students.
So just to clarify, every percentage point of attendance is, is valued at three million dollars in, in revenue? Thank you. Do we have any other questions from trustees? Technical obstacles.
Excuse me. Okay, so we're moving on to the next audit we wanted to highlight. We conducted a maintenance audit, and this is just, wanted to show the board that we don't just do, we don't just do compliance audits. This is an example of an operational audit that we did. And this was really focused on work order efficiency, on cost tracking, and preventive maintenance, all of which are essential for ensuring that maintenance operations are efficient and cost-effective. In summary, we found that sixty-four percent of work orders missed the two-week benchmark based on, on our analysis of over twenty-two thousand work orders. See, right here, here, yes. So this kind of gives you an idea, there, here's an A G report that provides the number of days when those work orders were completed. But on average, it was about six, six point three weeks or forty-four days that it really takes for a work order to be completed. And then also, we found inconsistencies in some of the time material tracking and some gaps in the preventive maintenance scheduling. This is one of the projects where the corrective action plan was developed with activities that are due during the current fiscal year, so that's one of the ones that we had rolled forward. There were some activities that were due in July. My understanding is the maintenance department submitted a corrective action plan extension to Ms. Aguirre for her review and for her approval. And then, but we don't have the date of that yet. So we'll be working with the maintenance team and with Ms. Aguirre on that.
I think we do have a question from trustee Estrland.
Okay.
One quick, when you, when it says refers to maintenance, is that a reoccurring maintenance? Or is that for, say, a broken window? Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
Maintenance.
Yes.
What does that refer to? Like, what does that umbrella, is that?
Oh, the maintenance department?
Like a broken window or?
Oh, it could be.
Yard needs to be mowed?
I think it encompasses all of that. So the maintenance department has various shops. They have, for example, like you said, the, oh, I think they're here, they're here. But they oversee, you know, the, the grounds, the grounds crew. We have the cabinet people, we have, I think, electricians. We have all sorts of shops that provide various services to the district. But if you have any specific questions, the gentleman or?
Thank you all for coming, I think it'd be great to hear. Just quick.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Joel Valencia, I'm the director of operations. And with me I have Joaquin Garcia, the director of maintenance, and Mr. David Ayala, the executive director for operations. So we're here to answer questions.
I have a question. Hi.
Trustee Sutton.
Yeah, sorry. First of all, thank you so much for your work, because it's a lot of work. Mr. Valencia, especially, we've been talking lately, so I hope you saw my email, because thank you. I have a question about the audit. Can we go back to the slide, I'm sorry? Here, that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Whenever you find these things, are you finding out why? For example, on average, work orders were completed in six weeks, you know, on average. Why is that happening?
So we have various reasons. We did inquire about that, and Mira can, may wanna, maybe you can help me with this, Mira? But if I remember correctly, there were various reasons.
Okay.
Some of the, like, one of the findings was also related to the tracking of the main, the work order, the work orders themselves. So in some cases, the work orders weren't immediately assigned to an individual, so they were kind of offloading out there before they were properly assigned, so they didn't start on time and it took longer. There's some cases where they finished the work but forgot to log the, the date when they finished. There was also instances when they had to order parts, and they had to order parts over the winter break. So the district was closed for two weeks. So I think in some cases, it created a longer delay in even getting those parts. So those are some of the examples. Is there any more specific ones that you can remember? The pending materials that they were waiting for? Oh, yeah, so they, they use iPads to log in to their locations. So sometimes they couldn't log in their finish date because they had no Wi-Fi, so they had to wait till they got to the office. Maybe they forgot at that point, because I don't know that that would change more than a few hours, but those are some of the reasons that, yes, we were given based on that.
Any other questions? Maybe it'd be good, since you all are here, just to give a real quick synopsis of what you each do, just so that we, just out of respect for your time.
Yes.
Be really good. And thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, I'm the?
What is it that you do, Myra?
Director of operations, and at this moment, I'm overseeing the whole operations department, I'm overseeing the division. So as Mr. Pearson departed, I am overseeing that. And I have these two gentlemen, which are my team, and we have, of course, nine hundred and something employees, which are our whole team. So I'll let them introduce themselves, but I do oversee the operations division.
Good evening, Vice President Lovridge, Board of Trustees, interim superintendent Marta Aguirre. My name is David Ayala, I'm the executive director of Operations Support Services. Sometimes I gotta take a win because it is a long title. But I directly oversee, I'm number two currently in the operations division. I supported Mr. Pearson when he was there on all things operations. Right now, I'm supporting Mr. Valencia in the same capacity. I directly oversee transportation, maintenance, custodial services, energy management, and help out a lot in facilities and construction as well, facility planning, the long-term, wow, I just went blank on that, long-range facility planning as well. So basically, all things operation, I do support that. And then we'll let Mr. Garcia introduce himself.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Lovridge, Ms. Aguirre. I'm Joaquin Garcia, the director of maintenance, and I oversee maintenance. And we cover plumbing, electrical, buildings, grounds, irrigation, HVAC. So that's what I, I'm, I cover.
Well, thank you all for all the hard work that you're doing. You oversee a district of forty-seven thousand students, and we appreciate everything that you do. And it's good that you all have made your introductions to our new trustees. So thank you very much, and good luck for a very successful new school year. Any other questions, trustees?
No, but thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And so I did advise on that.
I do have a question.
Oh, cool.
Sorry. For, I guess whoever wants to answer, for operations. Because we're talking about audit report, the audit reports and audit findings, can you explain how, like, what's the process of? I'm trying to find the right word. Prioritizing needs and then? How, how are you prioritizing things? For example, your HVACs or your grounds, is there a system there? Is it efficient? Do you feel like it's efficient? Do you feel like it needs some work?
So right now, what we do, we take every work order, whether it's an emergency work order, if it goes through the system, everything is vetted once it comes in. Through this year's leadership, we did do a holistic presentation from all of operations to all of our district leaders, ensuring that whenever they have an emergency situation, let's take, for example, right now, the situations that we have with the HVAC, right? Those are called in an emergency, and then it's followed up with a, I mean, they're submitted as an emergency work order because on the new system, on FMANX, you can categorize them as emergency, high priority, we'll get to it when we get to it. So whoever's importing, inputting that work order specifically, they have that autonomy to be, say, hey, this is an emergency, this is what, this is it. And then we come back and then we see it. It's followed up to a phone call to the maintenance supervisor, I mean, to the maintenance dispatch office, and then to either maintenance supervisor, custodial, or depending on, on what trade it is. And then we start deploying all of the forces that we need specifically to each campus. So as you understand, we have the district broken up into several regions, three regions, the northeast, the south central, and the west side. So our team has teams scattered all over the district. So depending on the severity of, of the situation, we start deploying workers from each and every trade. Like, right now, for example, we had one of the situations that we had in McGoffin. We had a specific team there, while at the same time, we're having issues at the other facilities. So we start pulling different, from different areas or even in the same region because we have multiple individuals. So we take everything on a case-by-case basis. We need to, because there's no top priority, because all of our student-occupied facilities are top priority. So once we start seeing it, we have, we work solidified together as a team so that it's not just one leader that's responding to these situations. We have several back traces of, of individuals that are following up in every single department so that we can attack every single situation. So we don't, we don't prioritize, well, this campus is more important than this other campus, this student is more important than this other student. We try to make sure that we work as a team to make sure that we cover the entire district.
What I would like to share, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is also that we are just converting into this new work order system. I think that the capabilities of what we had in the past was not as efficient or were not being utilized to the fullest potential. So I think that with this new system, it might help, it, it will be help, it will help manage and maybe do some more, more accurate coding of projects and, and really facilitate the, the execution of work orders as they come in, obviously looking at safety as a priority when, when you consider the work orders that are coming in. So it's, it's a transition summer, and, and, and we're hoping that as we continue through this year and as they continue implementing, a lot of what has been found is concerns, as far as the audit is concerned, that we're able to facilitate the, the remediation with this new system that we have in place.
And I also think using the new system, you know, to be able to better track staff utilization and the cost of supplies can help them prepare better from one year to the next so that hopefully, at one point, you know, they can also work on more preventive maintenance. Because I think they, I think right now, based on the resources they have and how they're managing, it could be a little more reactive rather than proactive. So I think one of the recommendations we've made also is to really focus on the preventive maintenance program. But I think at this point, they're, they're working on what they have based on what they have. I think once they start building or start, you know, using the work order system, I think they're going to better, be able to better predict the staff that they really need and the resources, money, materials, equipment, whatever it is that they need, and really come to budget and ask for it and say, look, this is what we have, this is what we've used in the last three years. Based on that, this is what we're asking for, for the next year. And we've also built into that request what's going to help us with the preventive maintenance program.
And I think fidelity of, of usage is going to be critical. And so the expectation of the, the department is that they ensure that every employee is required to follow through in the process because once we, if we don't use it with fidelity, well, it's, it's not going to be effective.
Right. I, I just, real quick, want to say.
Of course.
Thank you so much, especially Mr. Valencia and Mr. Ayala, because we've been talking. But what I said to Mr. Valencia was, I know y'all have a billion things you're juggling, and I, we, we, board members, but students, staff, everybody, we really appreciate it. But also, so you know, I told Ms. Aguirre that I, when people have reached out and they're like, what's happening? I have said, you know, they're doing everything they can with the resources that they have. So I, again, we appreciate you, and thank you, that's it.
I'm sure the weather doesn't help, and that's like so completely out of their control, so, but.
Yes, thank you for being here.
You know, I, I did, we did advise them that we were going to notify the board that we had an extension. And so I guess it's important to bring back to the committee that in the past, when there's been any extensions in corrective action plans, previous audit committee had asked leaders of the department to be here in case the board had questions about that extension. So I, I guess, based on your guidance, is if, should we continue that practice so that we can let them know to be here at the audit committee meetings?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay. And we'll, of course, work through Ms. Aguirre on that, but in case you have any questions, they're here. So I, I thank them for being here, thank you. Moving on to the final audit, we wanted to highlight, and it's on special education. The purpose of the audit was to determine if the district's following through on the federal, state, and local requirements when special education students were removed from their current placement for more than ten days due to disciplines. It was really focused on a discipline audit. The next couple of slides provide you with the, just a summary of the results, which include some compliance issues with the manifestation determination reviews, the behavior intervention plans, in gaps and required timelines, documentation, and the individualized education program services that should have been provided to students when they were removed from the classroom. As you know, these issues can affect student rights, compliance, as well as equity. And the, the special ed team also developed the corrective action plan, and they'll be implementing those activities this year. And the final section of the presentation is on the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. I'll go through this very quickly. One of the responsibilities outlined in our internal audit charter is for internal audit to manage the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. We set aside, we set aside hours in our audit plan every year to monitor the hotline reports from receipt through resolution. It doesn't mean we investigate all reports. As you'll see later in the presentation, we get a lot of reports that are more employee relations-related, complaints about, you know, the supervisor, et cetera. So a lot of those do get forwarded to the appropriate administrator based on where the complaint is and the higher level than that. But if there are issues related to fraud, abuse, those are things that internal audit will look into. For last year, we received a total of eighty-four reports. However, seventeen of those reports were duplicate complaints. So in reality, it was more like sixty-seven unique complaints. The complaints were for forty different locations, and eighty-two of those complaints, eighty-two percent of those complaints were anonymous. And since we submitted this presentation, the two reports that were pending closure have been closed. So all report, all hotline reports for last year have been closed. This slide just provides a comparison over the last five years of the count of hotline reports. As you can see, this is the lowest hotline report count in the last four years. We're at a similar level to where we were in twenty twenty-one, when I think we're working from home at that time. So the, the count was really low this last year. This slide provides the, the categories for these complaints. And as I mentioned, we get a lot that are related to employee complaints. We are able to use the hotline system to post messages to callers, and we take advantage of that. We post messages to let them know that their complaint was forwarded to the appropriate administrator. But we also try to guide them to go to the board policy that outlines the complaint process, DGBA. But, you know, if they provide enough information related to the complaint, even if they don't, we forward to the appropriate administrator so that they can address as they deem necessary. If it is something more serious, or if there's enough information provided, we do monitor to make sure that some action is taken. And we won't close the report until we get a written report from. written report from whoever's in charge of following up on the concern. And then, this slide just summarizes the outcome of the reports, the ones that were followed up on. As you can see, only five of the reports last year were substantiated, and happy, I'm happy to say that none of those were fraud-related. There were various concerns. I think two were related to employee time, one was related to grading, one was inappropriately selling food for personal gain, and I think that's about it, so.
Any questions from trustees?
And that's all I have for this presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez.
I have one more, if you will be patient with me, but I will be very brief. I just thought with new trustees and the beginning of a new year, yes, Mira, please, I wanted just to go over with the audit committee, you know, the internal audit reporting communication that we provide to you.
So, this takes us to agenda item two.
Yes, sorry, agenda item two, yes. Prior to I can zoom. As you know, we really are, we comply with the professional standards from the Institute of Internal Auditors. One of the requirements in the standards is that the chief internal auditor provide the board with the information you need to properly oversee that we're doing, what you expect us to do. That can come from, based on the judgment of the head internal auditor, of what they think that, or, for example, what I think is important for you to have in order for you to have proper oversight of our internal audit and to be able to evaluate me, but at the same time, there's also, I need to consider what your needs are, what the board wants me to provide to them during my quarterly reports, the reports that I provide to the audit committee and in between. See? So, at EPISD, what we've done is we've actually put some of those required reporting, that required reporting information, and it's outlined in our internal audit charter, which is board policy CFC exhibit, and some of the information that we provide to the trustees is, includes our mandate, which outlines what we're responsible for doing as internal audit and how we maintain independence. We also, you know, I keep talking about that internal audit plan, that audit plan comes to you for approval. We provide performance reports and any significant changes to the audit plan. We also report on our budget and our staffing levels to ensure we have the resources to do our job effectively, any potential impairments to our independence or objectivity, as I covered today. We also provide results from our quality assurance and improvement program, including actions class, to address any areas of improvement. That's really focused on compliance with the standards, and I'll be bringing a report to the board in October. Any significant risk exposures or control issues that could interfere with the district achieving its strategic priorities, including governance controls or fraud risk, and then finally, the results of our audit engagements as well as corrective action plans. You receive those from us when we issue those reports, and these updates aren't the intent, it's not just procedural, they really are designed to give the board confidence that the risks are being identified and addressed, and that internal audit is operating independently, effectively, and in alignment with the district's strategic priorities. The next one. I also wanted to, you all are audit committee, but just remind you that the board has established an audit committee. It's outlined in board policy, BDB local. Mira passed out the, a copy of the audit committee charter. The audit committee, the purpose of the audit committee is to assist the full board with the oversight of internal audit. It's made up of three committees, no more than three board members, and those are assigned, appointed by the board president. The chairperson really provides the direct support to me. We at EPIS, our internal audit department here at EPISD, we report to the board functionally but also administratively, so the chair is really the one that approves my lead, approves anything, you know, the day-to-day travel, and really works with me day-to-day on things, operational stuff in the department. And then, the general responsibilities for the committee are outlined in that policy that Mira just handed out. I meet with the committee on a quarterly basis. This is our first committee meeting of the fiscal year to discuss the status of the audit plan, results of audit engagements, or other activities that you've requested for me to present on. I wanted to provide just the schedule of our reporting. We report in quarters, so quarter one, for example, covers the activity that, in our office, from July through September, and our audit committee is scheduled in October, and then the report to the trustees typically goes to everyone during the same month, but I've given myself a deadline that no more, no later than November, it'll go to the whole board of trustees. And as you see, our audit committee meetings are October, January, April, and since the district is closed, you know, the reporting period ends in June, but the district doesn't typically have meetings in July, so we have our audit committee in August, which is timely because my evaluation is in August, so. And then, I've also provided this table, which is part of our internal audit procedures, what we call our map manual of audit policies and procedures, and it's just for me to hold myself accountable on the different topics that I just discussed on slide four, that I report to the board, and when you can expect to get it from me. So, you'll see that each item is tied either to a quarter and as well as other frequency as applicable. These categories, the tables are broken down by category, including just general communication, planning and performance, and then the last one is staffing and resources. So, I just wanted to have, start the conversation. I'm sure I'll have subsequent meetings with some of you as you, you know, get further into this role, and if you decide that there's additional information that you want me to provide to the audit committee, then we can definitely add it. If it's less, I mean, we can also have that discussion. If maybe I provide too much, you'll let me know, but I just wanted to start that conversation, especially since we have a couple of audit committee members that are new to the role. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Trustee Sutton?
Yes, I was just wondering if you all wanted to introduce yourselves and tell us your positions.
Yes, please, that would be great.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mira Rodriguez, and I'm the audit supervisor in the internal audit department.
Good afternoon. My name is Adelie Carrillo, and I'm the audit manager.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Liz Barra. I'm a senior internal auditor.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Sue Ramirez, and I'm an internal auditor.
Hello, my name is Julie Franco, and I'm a senior internal auditor.
And we're missing some of the team members, but Julie, Sue, and Liz are really like the people that do the audits. Mira and Adelie help me oversee all audits. The professional standards require that we have really good monitoring systems in place to make sure that, from planning to fieldwork to reporting, that we have strong evidence to support our findings. Our audit working papers are maintained for at least three years, but since we get audited every five years as a department, then we really keep them to five, so it's really important that we keep strong evidence, that we comply with the standards, and these ladies help me with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking for that, because really, they do like a lot of the heavy lifting with the audits, so. And it's a unique department because it's not like we just have to know auditing, we really have to understand the different areas of the district, how they kind of could impact each other, reporting to the state. As you saw, we saw audits from attendance and truancy to special ed to maintenance. We did audits of dropout levers. I mean, we have audits of IT. We really do, like, we were talking about that, trustee Guayar, that we can audit almost anything but not everything, so. And that's all I have.
I was telling Myra that before, that kind of like really stuck out in my, when she told me that, that's just always kind of going through my head, whatever. I'm like, I wonder if we could take a look at that? And I'm like, yep, we can, you can audit anything, just not everything. But then, I also wanted to highlight, I think the last time I met with Myra, you were saying that there was some accreditation, I think, that your all's department had?
Yes.
Received, right? What is that?
So, our auditors are encouraged to pursue accreditations from the Institute of Internal Auditors. They're, as I mentioned, they're like global standards that they set. They also have the certification, that is the certified internal auditor, CIA, and it's a tough certification to obtain, it's in three different parts, and so, I'm really happy to say that, you know, I'm a CIA, Mira's a CIA, Adelie's a CIA, and Liz recently became a CIA. We also, we also have another certification, we're certified fraud examiners, which is also a global certification, and again, I think the same team members, but also Sue is a CFE, and then Sue and Julie also have certifications from the Texas Association of School Business of Business Officials. I was gonna say Doug, but yeah, so, we work really hard at, you know, earning our credentials because we know that it also helps with the credibility, it also helps continuing with our education to make sure that we can be, we can do the best we can. Best work we can.
Are all of us credentials, and that's possible that we have? I'm sure there's one person who's a senior.
Actually, yes, yes, yes. Between all of us, there's over 100, yes.
Not calling them the board.
Well, any other questions? Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the report, thank the entire department, the internal audit department, for your objectivity, for the high quality of your work and the consistency with which you do it. You really do serve the district very well, and being independent is exactly what we need so that we can learn how to better serve our students, and that's our highest priority. So, thank you very much. With that, I'll close the meeting at 6:22 PM. Thank you.
Thank you so much.